Uh, soon our.
Uh, that's the basic. For bowl with the, uh, uh, direction, uh, it's going and, um, um, hopefully give it the nod to keep moving forward. So at this point, may I turn it over to Brandy and just have her give her a few into a few introductory comments?
Sure.
Very, very briefly. Um, Mayor City Council, thank you for, uh, the topic tonight. So as, as you know, uh, TJL Development is here tonight, they're looking for, um, ultimately approval of a new mixed use development at, uh, four addresses on the Seventh Avenue, um, and Helen Street. And what they currently have, um, is an application for a planned unit development project, which is going to be reviewed by this, uh, planning commission next Thursday, um, September first. So it's still presently in staff review in terms of planning and, and engineering. Um, but tonight, as, uh, Mr. Waldron said, we're going to take a look at the proposal from the developer's perspective. And basically this is an opportunity for you to, um, to provide some comments and ask questions about the project. So if you have any questions for them specifically, um, those will go that way. If you have any questions about process and staff type, um, uh, you know, some of the steps that will be coming forward, that'll be, um, Mr. Waldron and myself. And then Morgan is also here. That is all. Uh, please welcome, welcome, come on up to the podium.
Uh, good evening.
Welcome Jim.
Good evening. Yes, my name's Jim Vell. Good evening, uh, Mayor and council members. I'm really excited to be here and I'm here with Jeff Reddy and Kenny Stevenson with Momentum Architects. Um, we've done a lot of work since last time we saw you, we've engaged the community and we've met with staff and we have submitted our land use applications. I, I don't remember, um, if last time we were here, if we had, uh, we entered into a purchase agreement with, with Mr. Peach. So we have the half the block per se. So I, I don't recall if you, if you've seen that or not. So things have changed a lot.
Rumor, rumor had it.
Yeah. So really, really excited and, um, so anyway, Jeff met with, uh, members from the Historical Society. And we've received a bunch of comments. So I think I'm just going to turn the floor over to Jeff and we can turn the computer on and go through the site plan and.
Hey Carrie, is there a way to turn on this screen here at all or do we know if, is there a switch or did we turn that off that last time?
We couldn't find a switch.
We'll let the young guy take care of it.
The engineer Dolly's moving forward.
That's pretty neat.
Well, we could just go off of that.
We do have some copies here that we could.
Oh yeah.
Should we give these copies?
Yep, we can certainly do that. There's two, there's one copy here. I just wanted to get a turn to the page X zero two.
Here's another one. We've got three copies.
Okay. All right. So what, Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Jeff Reddy from Momentum Design Group. And, uh, uh, as Jim had mentioned before, we had, uh, come before you guys with, uh, with some images of projects that we've done in the past. And we didn't, we didn't, we didn't, we wanted to say that, uh, the project won't look like any of these, but this is what we've done in the past. And this is the quality of, uh, design that we do. Um, so from that, what we did was, as Jim said, we met with the Historic Society and we spent, uh, I don't know, about an hour and a half over there. And interviewing some of the folks over there and they gave us some ideas of, of the history of your, your little town. Uh, and as I drove through here tonight, I was, I just drove down the main street and I said, what a quaint little town. And we really, uh, wanted to take some of the historic i- ideals that you had here or some of the historic buildings that you had in town. And try to incorporate those into the design of the building that you see in front of you. And so, uh, on X zero seven, X zero two, you'll see in the upper right-hand corner is the Earhoff, uh, building, manufacturing building. And it's our understanding that that was, uh, in town or a little out of town. And unfortunately it burned down after it was turned into the ski company. But as you can, as you look at the images in front of you there, you'll notice that our image on, if you can go back to the very, the cover sheet.
It's gonna take a while.
Okay. It's the very first page in the, in the set of drawings, shows the rendering of the building and this one right here. And we took cues from the Earhoff Organ Company and incorporated them into this building.
Okay?
So we're trying to use some historic inspiration for this building. Also, as we studied, uh, the history of the, of the, of the city, we realized that there was a lot of manufacturing here. But it wasn't just one kind of manufacturing. It was a, a, a number of different types of manufacturing. You had furniture companies, you had organ piano, uh, downhill skis, you had brick company. And so that's where we got the inspiration for the industrial feel on the corner of the building with this, oop, over on this side here. We have more of an industrial feel there to kind of emulate what was going on in the history of your city. Where you had a lot of manufacturing and a lot of jobs here. And so that's really the inspiration behind this, uh, the design is the historic, history of the, of the, uh, of this community. Now, also on this page here, you'll see the, uh, the lawn ski image right here. Uh, we, we're, we're planning on using imagery like this, this historic imagery and turning this into wall coverings on the inside of the building. But also as you see this down here, as we go through our package, you'll see that we're planning on using this. Um, this is your main street and then this is your trolley. And the trolley ran down Sepulveda Boulevard. And so we have a corner of the building where we're planning on putting a trolley image, a historic photograph from your Historical Society, on the corner of that building on Sepulveda Boulevard. This, this image right here is your main street and we're looking at putting that on the corner of Sepulveda and Ha- Hel- Helen, I believe it's called Helen Street. So we're really trying to incorporate a lot of historic cues from your city into this building.
And that'd be on the outside?
It's on the outside.
Like a.
It would be on the north west corner of the building.
Yeah.
Maybe the north side on the west, maybe we could just go.
Yeah, he's trying to get it. There you go.
There's two.
Yep. Can you see where his, his cursor is pointing right now?
This is the trolley here.
That's fronting Sepulveda Boulevard.
Yep. And then you just turn the, uh, tooth angle and then it would be the downtown image.
Right, right. I thought we had a 3D view of that. We might in the back here, not sure yet. So.
But even more so that is creating a building that has a really strong sense rooted in the community.
Correct.
And building off that and we'll use, uh, great partners to help brand our building and I don't know, I'm getting really warmed up to naming the building the Lily too.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Yeah.
Really, but really creating a strong sense through physical things to the community as well.
Yeah.
At each, each of our projects.
Now, one of the things that I think we talked about at the original presentation to you guys, I think we just had a floor plan possibly of it. I, I don't remember. That was a long time ago. But, um, is the shape of the upper floors. You can see this is a C shape with a, with an outdoor patio deck in the center. The architects originally, we had the C shape going the opposite direction because for us, we always want to push things up to the street. Uh, Jim had a strong opinion about sucking the center of the building back. And what this did was this created, uh, these two tower elements on the sides, but it also created a negative space in the center, which really kind of stepped the building down and made it very comfortable to pedestrians on the street. And so we have this retail looking frontage on the front here, which is, uh, it appears to be two stories, but it's really one. And then we have the, uh, we have the, uh, the, the party deck or the amenity deck right above that. And I think that that change to that shape of the building really made a, for a much better project all, all around. Because what we're, we're, we're doing is we're reducing the mass on the street to the two end units. And then we're providing the negative space in the center and it's really making ver- for a really unique design to the building. So, and it also.
We heard that just, uh, we heard that's from several people is to give the building some articulation and not a big, big mass wall.
Right.
Alongside, so that's why we.
And, and in addition to that, it provides the amenity space, the outdoor community space overlooking the main street, which is going, you know, during the hot rod shows and things like that and all the festivals that you have here. People will be up there and it'll, it'll be a fantastic engaging space. So, so that's, uh, I mean, I know there's a bunch more to this. I can keep going if you want.
Maybe we can go just go quickly through the, the schematics of the building.
Sure.
Uh, where we're at today is we have, as you've seen before, I believe, we have one level of underground parking. We have one level of on-grade parking and that on-grade parking is wrapped with dwelling units, a commercial space and a manage space.
Why don't you go to this X O three?
And then three stories above that of dwelling units. So our counts right now, we're at eighty-two dwelling units comprised of studios ones and twos. We're at ninety-three parking stalls, but we are creating, um, four more stalls along Helen.
Yep.
And, uh, we're proposing to redo curbs and everything out to the curb line. The only thing that we're going to leave on the site is the metro transit bus shelters. So that stays activated while we're building the building. There's enough dimension there to do that.
Yep.
And then maybe more specifically, why don't you walk them through amenity spaces and stuff?
Sure. And, uh, yeah. So, uh, so what we try, uh, the way we organized the building is we wanted to retail in the building, but we thought that the retail should be as close to the main activity of the downtown as possible. So we put that on the, the far end of the building closest to the main activity of downtown. We want that retail to be, uh, as successful as possible. We then filled in with these peach areas. These are called live work units. And they're large enough so that a person can run a home office out of it, or they can have a pottery, or they can, they can do, they can have a small office in there. It could be a real estate agent. It could be a insurance agent. They can hang a shingle outside. They can, we can put, um, uh, what are the, the blade signs outside. Uh, and so we, so we have the o- opportunity to have much more retail on the first floor. And then on the very end, which is the least, um, active part of downtown, but also more of the gateway to downtown. We have the entry with the acute angle for the apartment building. And that gets a little tricky because we have, uh, we do have slope to that street. It doesn't look like it, but we are losing feet from one end to the other. And five, okay. We're losing a lot of feet from one end to the other. And so we, uh, we allowed ourselves to do a really unique entry down there on the point. And we have a grand staircase coming up. We also have an outdoor, what I call a porch. And that would be for more people to be onlookers for the, uh, for the, the street activities and things that, that go on throughout the day or the week. Uh, and then that's where we have our, our main lobby, our office space, our, uh, our, our fitness, uh, area is on that floor. Uh, we have, uh, a couple of different levels. So we have elevators going from half level to half level and that type of thing there. Um, and then, uh, and then we also have, what I'm going to say, we have two garages. We have the below level, the basement garage, which has, we have one door here. And then we have the at-grade garage was, which has another door right next to it, if that makes any sense. So, um, so we have two garage doors, two garages at two different levels. Okay? So then the second floor.
Just show it in the corner.
Okay. That'd be X zero four. There we go. So the second floor, let me find it here. Uh, that would be.
Middle image on the left-hand side of the page.
Yep. Middle image, left side, inside of the page. That's just units and, um, and the outdoor amenity deck.
There's a peach area in the knuckle of the building. It's also a community area that would have, uh.
Yep. That'll have an indoor fireplace. It'll have a kitchen. It'll have bathrooms, restrooms.
And then we'll have them, and then there'll also be balconies or segregated areas for those dwelling units to have an outdoor area as well.
Correct. In the community outdoor amenity deck, there would be, uh, we can have, we can have a fire pit. We can have barbecue grills. We'll have pergolas. We'll have dining. We'll have lounges. Um, you know.
Heating areas.
Yeah. What we've done in the past, we've done, you know, like a movie screen out there. We've, uh, we've looked at Warm Ice. But this is a little bit too small for all of those, but we will definitely have fire pit, barbecue grills, outdoor dining, uh, lounges and a game area. Those, those five things will absolutely be out there. So bags and that type of thing.
Hmm.
Go to the image, uh, just top of that image, similar to second floor, that's fourth floor.
Yep.
Look at the point of that building. There's another outdoor community, uh, community area of indoors and an outdoor area up there as well.
Correct. And that's, and that's just a smaller indoor community space and a smaller outdoor community space.
Are there balconies overlooking?
Yeah.
That's.
This is the, this is the top floor balcony right there. That is the community balcony right there.
It doesn't project over. It's inside.
Yeah. Has a little pergola on the outside of it, on the, on the roof of it. And it's just a glass wall. That's on your page, page one, X zero zero.
During the winter, how does that work with all that patio that's?
It's, it's up to management. Uh, most people close it down during the, during the snowy months. I, I don't know if you want to close it down or remove the snow or.
Well, on a few of the buildings that we've done, the way the shape of the building turned out is we had areas where we could move the snow to just on the roof. So we've kept some of the buildings. On this one, I, we may be able to keep some second floor open by segregating an area that I don't want to throw snow over on the sidewalk.
No.
No.
Here comes our public works guy. He, uh, he probably does want to hear that.
Yeah.
So it's likely that second, the, the higher, the fourth floor, outdoor area would be likely closed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, or there's technologies where we can do, uh, heated floors and it could, it could let you, you know, plumbing systems down.
And that was my, kind of my question is it.
We would love to do things like that. It's always becomes a budget issue.
Right.
And they're very, very expensive to do.
Right.
Boilers and, you know, heating systems, but, um, if the, if the budget allows us the opportunity to do that, I will do that. I just, I can't.
Mm-hmm.
Can't say I can do that today.
Right.
That's pretty much it. If you guys have any more, if you have any questions, we can answer them.
I'm assuming that's a flat roof on top?
Correct. Yep.
I do appreciate you when you came in for the public engagement. I thought that was very good. And then I'm, the, my parents are kind of founders of the Historical Society, so that's even better. And, um, this retail, what, what are you looking, what are you looking for that or?
The, the purple, the purple.
Yeah. I mean, what would be like some ideas on, yeah.
I would store it. It would be nice to have a quiet use that's like a coffee.
Okay.
Something that's not directly, uh, that's already, that's already here.
Competition. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Okay.
It wouldn't be a restaurant?
Well, I think there, it could be a subway. It could be something like that, but I don't, uh, it's difficult to do restaurants that do fried food because
Right.
All the families, I don't want to, my residents to smell french fries while they're, you know, there for hopefully long.
So they would lease this from you? Is that correct or you wouldn't be running it? So, okay. Okay.
Can you speak to, uh, sorry, are you done Candy?
I am. Thanks.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Um, can you speak to your decision on the balance of retail versus live work space? Cause I see one retail space and the remaining would be live work.
Uh, sure. The retail space in these buildings are, it's, uh, it's, uh.
Very complicated. And there's, um, you know, a price point that this building, the rents in this building for this, for that retail space are going to be, have to be mid twenties to thirties to make it work. You can, you can rent other retail space in this corridor for probably teens or low twenties, depending upon what the deal is. And we see that I just don't want to cannibalize vacancies that are already there with a bunch of space that isn't even going to get filled up. Um, so I'm not trying to speak in a negative term. It's just, it's really, it's a really difficult math problem. Um, so that's what we decided is to provide another type of dwelling unit, a live work unit that still activates the street with a different kind of retail, you know, space that isn't, isn't this, is not in this marketplace today.
If you had, uh, someone that came in and said, you know what, sixteen hundred feet just isn't enough. I need twenty-five hundred. Are you able to accommodate for that or?
Yes. When we've discussed with our team, we can do, we can make those spaces all, um, flexible from a live work perspective or retail perspective. We can grow, grow the retail space. Or if the retail space never fills, we could potentially put live work units in that.
Is that kind of, that's.
So it's interchangeable.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
So if we were to get a grocery store that wanted to come in and take that whole first floor, would, would that be a possibility?
That would be a possibility, yes.
Okay.
Would love to have a grocery store.
Right. And the ceilings are looking at this, they're higher than?
I think it's, we're either nineteen or twenty feet clear inside that space to give it a really nice volume and give it a really nice feel.
Mm-hmm.
And also give us the ability to do a mezzanine for those live work units. Where you could have bedrooms that are completely upstairs and segregated from downstairs to allow it, you know, more space to work in.
Councilmember Thorson.
I think last time you were here, someone had asked a question about if you had, had experience with that live work space in any other of your previous projects. And I thought that you had stated that you hadn't.
I've not done, well, we, our firm has done live workspace, but I as an architect have not done.
Okay.
So if you want, I can check in with my other colleagues in my office and see how that is going.
Cause I, I mean, it's good to hear that, that there's flexibility. I guess that's by one concern is that, you know, as you're talking about the history of our town and, and we have a unique downtown, it's kind of getting consumed with apartments. And, and, and we're losing businesses. Um, and so that's my concern is that these live workspaces, there'll be a high demand for live, but no work part of it. And so if, if that whole, the sun, your whole first floor just turns into, well, people are, people aren't wanting to just live here. Um, you know, now we've got residential on the first floor where it's kind of straying from, I think, our vision that we've adopted on some, and at one point I thought that there was a requirement that the whole first floor need to be retail by, we've made changes to the zoning code. They're more flexible. Um, but I, you know, I guess that was just my one question is that have you seen that successful live workspace that you've dealt with before personally or just not?
I can respond with, with some initial thoughts before your question is that upon land use approvals and closing on the real estate, what I promise I will do is engage the best, I have several colleagues, brokerage colleagues that are, that play in the retail space really heavily. And I'll, we'll engage the best one we can to, to find the best retailers we can for this. Um, I personally haven't done any retail, uh, live workspace in your second question in any of the buildings that I've done. I do have some colleagues that have done them and we model, we were modeling some of the way the interior, this could work.
Mm-hmm.
Like Clark Gasson's building in Rochester.
Yep.
So I have some colleagues that have done them and we have some data. Their firm actually did the building.
Yep.
So we have some of that data available to us, um, that's, that's succeeded in other areas.
Okay. Um. Downtown, there's assumption there's going to be noise. There's snow removal in the winter and, and we've kind of experienced that with this new apartment, the Sentinel. I think someone was throwing snowballs at Public Works right off the bat. Um, so what, what kind of, uh, you know, expectations do your tenants have that, hey, you're moving into an area here that potentially at three in the morning, you're going to be hearing beep, 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 uh, you know, snow removal in the winter. Car shows on Friday nights, you know, what, what sorts of communications do you have with your tenants about that?
Um, I think some of those things are beneficial to the project. Um, having car shows and different festivities, that's going to be a big driver for people want to, want to live here. In an urban environment, I, I live in St. Paul. I've lived in St. Paul a long time. We have a fire station right down the, down the street from us. My daughter says, why did you pick this house? I said, well, because I want to be close to the chief. I mean, so I, that's part of the charm or part of the dynamic of living in a, a location like this is, um, it's part of the experience. So, I mean, if the, if snowfalls out there at three o'clock in the morning, that's great.
Yeah. Okay.
Things have been cleared out when they.
Well, exactly. Yeah. And that's, so I, yeah.
Restaurant, that's like two blocks away or one block.
Sure.
I mean, there are, there are benefits to living downtown and there are, there are non-benefits to it.
Absolutely. And the, the reason I bring that up is because it, it seemed like it was a shock to these people that moved into this place that this, this stuff was going to happen. And, you know, I just kind of think, well, you know, that's part of living in a, in a, you know, in the city, you know? I mean, God forbid what happens when an airplane flies over, you know, I don't know what they, how they react, but.
Snow removal is probably in their building.
Yeah, yeah, well, just to bring that up, just so it's not a shocker, um, but, I mean, the building looks wonderful, um, I don't, I don't see any issues that, other than, you know, just my concern about the commercial space. And then is, is TIF in the works for this project?
Uh, we have filed an, um, a narrative and a TIF application with Mikhailov, with Baker Tilly. Uh, had a conversation with her in regards to that, um, mid-week last week, and she's on, she's conveyed that she's going to be sending a memo out to staff in regards to her initial findings. We didn't talk about anything, she just gave me an update, what was going on, so, there is a gap there. I don't know if she agrees with me, or if she disagrees with me, but we're working through that process now.
Okay. And then, um, if, if all goes to plan, what's the anticipated, uh, start date, or like, when's a building, the existing structure is going to start coming down? Do you have any idea on that yet?
Uh, we have two purchase agreements in place, one with Lily family that, um, closing would be for mid Oc- or, mid, early to mid-October, and Mr. Peach's purchase agreement is for, uh, early December. And so what I would anticipate with the amount of time it takes for building dock, it's other things, we would likely remediate the building, in December or January, and file for building permits, probably by the same time, and then start demolishing buildings in February or March, and start digging a hole in March, April.
Okay.
It'll take us, it'll take us likely a year, maybe fourteen months to build the building.
And the, one last concern is that, obviously, there's, there's, there were two tenants in there beforehand, one has since left Clay's Barbershop. He actually was displaced from the previous apartment complex, and the current one, American Turbine. I know, this is a private deal, but I know he, he did come forward to the city at the EDA meeting and ask for some assistance in relocation. He has a desire to stay in town, but it, it just doesn't seem like that's possible, and I know in speaking with him personally, his concern is just how much time he has to, to relocate. Um, now, you know, Lilies can, you know, that's part of renting, they can, they can, they tell them to, you know, you got to leave by the end of the month, or you got to be out, you know, whatever. You can also do that too as buying it, but, you know, in that, in the respect of, you know, being courteous and respectful of businesses and, in this small-town community that we have, I guess that would just be my one wish, that you try to work with him and not leave him in the lurch, if he needs, you know, if he's been asked to, to vacate by the end of this month, or the end of next month, and he needs some extra time, if there's nothing that's going to take place in that building, you know, maybe give him an extra month or so until he can at least find somewhere else to go, that would be my only concern. That we, we know, it's not really anything we can ask of you, but just per, on a personal level, uh.
Sure, and I've tried to assist Mr. Moga, Noga, excuse me, Noga, by sending him referrals of, uh, properties that I know that are, that are available. And I know that he's, uh, discussed some of those properties with some of my brokerage friends. And I'm happy to work with him, but I, I do, in, um, disco, all disclosures, there, there is a dispute between the Lilies and Mr. Mo, Noga right now about his lease term. And their position is that they'd like to get him out because they're paying more in utilities than what he's paying in rent. So there is a dispute between those two parties that I have nothing to do with, so, I'm happy to work with him, but I, I can't control what those two parties do.
Sure. I guess the example that I would think of is if, if I were to buy a single-family house and there was a family already living there renting from a previous owner, and my intent was to move in right away, and they had asked me, hey, before, you know, on a condition of the sale, before you move in, can you give this family time to find another place to live? It just kind of seems like it's a reasonable request, but I understand it's not anything we can do. I'm just bringing that up as a good neighbor type of thing.
I'll be a good neighbor with, in the event, I, I get the opportunity to do that.
Great, well, good to hear, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Cole, anything?
I have no questions that haven't already been addressed, other than the fact that what I'm seeing here looks beautiful. Um, I, I, I mirror some of the questions about retail and flexibility of the live-work space, and, um, I think all of us would love to see more retail come on to, come on to the streets to be able to, to give the, the new residents services that we currently don't offer. We don't know what those are yet until they, they're here and they ask for them. But I also understand as the, the builders and the developers, you need to make sure you've got space that you can rent as well, so. So that was really kind of where, where I sat, but other than that, it's, it's beautiful, guys.
Councilmember Wong?
I would totally agree with that, I really love the patio deck on the second floor, I think that'll be a huge, um, asset. I also appreciate that you left the Metro Transit bus station there. I do have questions in regards to, um, transportation, so another asset in our community would be the Gateway Trail. Are there any accommodations that you're providing that are around cycling or bikes, bikes for amenities for your, um, tenants?
Well, yeah, each building we do promotes that type of transit, and ways we do that, we have an actual bike repair room that's got tools in it and pumps in it for pumping up tires, it's actually kind of a neat little kit. It's got allen wrenches and wrenches and everything, and, and we, uh, on this building, we likely will put bike parking racks in front of each parking stall. So there'll be plenty of opportunity for, um, easy, convenient storage for your bikes and promoting that as well. No, I love the trail, it's one of the things that, I mean, how far you can go to Wisconsin on that trail, can't you?
Just about, yeah.
Yeah. It's fantastic, it's fantastic.
Growing, growing as the years go on.
Right.
Think you'd be able to connect up to, go all the way up to Duluth at some point, or at least White Bear Lake and connect to that trail there. I mean, I love the design, I love the historical part of it, uh, I think a lot of thought went into the design and how it's going to fit into our downtown, and I commend, commend you guys in coming up with a great plan for us. Councilmember Wong?
I'm also looking at Sepulveda Boulevard, I see that's kind of primarily where the garage is.
Yes.
Entrances are. Um, we just completed our redevelopment master plan, and my understanding was that Sepulveda was to be a more pedestrian-friendly space, so I do have a little bit of concern in regards to parking garages and pedestrian-friendly.
We do, yeah, and we do show a sidewalk all along Sepulveda where there is none right now. Unfortunately, our sidewalk goes to the post office that doesn't have a si- a sidewalk, but we're doing our best to, to enhance that. As far as the garage is opening, um, I hate to say we could put a buzzer on it because they're loud.
Maybe we can do other, some type of instrument that would be, uh,
Yeah.
eliminate a light that flashes, or, we, we can do some pedestrian, um, precautionary things to promote. And then we did leave a green space between the sidewalk and.
Yeah, so it's not like the sidewalk is tight up against the building and then there's a garage door, there's, you know, there's a good, what, six feet of, of, of landscaping between the, the sidewalk and the garage door, so it does give you a buffer, so.
Um, I appreciate that, I'm, I'm sorry, I maybe didn't specify that, my understanding of the Sepulveda Boulevard was to be pedestrian-friendly for the entire, entire road, is that my understanding, yeah?
Oh, you're, you're eliminating the road and turning it into a, a walking path?
More, yeah, more of a walking path is what's my understanding of redevelopment.
Can I clarify a little bit? Um, I think the intent of that was to make it more pedestrian, bicycle-friendly, but also to continue to allow veh- vehicular traffic on Sepulveda. So instead of, um, kind of like a, a Vunner style, if you are familiar with that term. Yep, um, so definitely to promote more non-motorized vehicular transportation, but to keep it open for those necessary.
So it'll be narrower?
I, I don't think it can be any narrower than it already is. It's something that would have to go, undergo its own, you, you know, design process, so that could be an opportunity for, for this project, is to consider how that might come forward. Thank you.
Robert?
Can I, uh, can I pile on this Sepulveda issue real quick? So, I have a comment.
Oh, sure. I'll leave this up here for you.
So I, I have a number of notes, but since you're on the Sepulveda topic, it was one of, one of my key topics, and to Councilmember Wong's point, uh, we, we do have it in the redevelopment master plan, I do agree that I think the intent was a commingled vehicular and, uh, you know, bicycle and pedestrian type arrangement. Um, I, I think we went to a lot of work in the redevelopment master plan, and, uh, I, I do, I do have some concerns about the Sepulveda-facing facade and what's going on there, not, not the fact that, I, I get it, you got to get the cars in and out somewhere, it probably makes as good a sense as anywhere, and I think the fact that this is at the far end of Sepulveda is something that is very workable. But what I, what I don't see right now in the plan, if, if we were to pull up the redevelopment master plan and look at some of the images and the text that we prepared of what the vision for Sepulveda ultimately is, I, I don't think this is a, here's an opportunity to start setting that tone. It's really our first opportunity to set the tone of what that's going to be, and I don't think that facade is it. I, I don't think that accomplishes setting a good tone for what we want ultimately to Sepulveda to be. Now, um, as, as we all know, particularly on the EDA, this is not, no one's going to snap their fingers, and, and we're going to have those images that we have in the redevelopment master plan. But if we hold tight to it over a number of years, you know, probably ten, maybe twenty, who knows, uh, that can be a real, real gem at some point, so I, I would encourage that, this is a, a tad out of the EDA purview, but I would encourage the council and planning to really not let stuff go by, particularly major projects as we're doing them, and not give a hard look at what we're trying to do with Sepulveda. Because if we, uh, and, and I'm not suggesting you guys are trying to get away with something, I just, you know, it's a, it's a newer agreed-upon vision, I would say, for the city. And so, um, I, I, I would just discourage particularly major projects getting through, and we don't strongly address that. Because if we don't, ten years, twenty years, it's going to be an alleyway, just like it is now, and I don't think that's the agreed-upon vision, so. I have more comments, but I just want to jump in on that.
I think we did one, we did one injustice to ourselves. Can you and Kenny walk around the building, describe the materials that, and the intent? I don't know if it was clear, but these, some of these images, I don't, I don't think you do a good job.
I, I thought, you know, I thought it was okay, I mean, I, I kind of, I kind of see it, and I, I also understand the, um, you know, based on, if we look at the Sepulveda elevation, and, and I, I understand when you have a housing facility, you, you might have some emergency exits and things, but you have primary exits. But that doesn't, that doesn't really encourage, uh, people going in and out off of Sepulveda, right? That's kind of like bottom-of-the-stair-fire-exit-type-stuff, bail out and get to a street. I, I think that, um, again, what I, I don't want to speak for Councilmember Wong, but if, if you dig into the recently-approved redevelopment master plan, and you look at some of those images of Sepulveda and what we're trying to do with it, uh, I'll just say, that's not it. And, and, you know, what does it need to be? I, I think that's for others to determine. But, uh, it doesn't really set, particularly the, the size and the scope of this project. And I, I'm sure there'll be additional dollars involved, and, you know, we're working through a TIF application. Uh, I, I just think that we should determine what it is we want there, and if we're going to set a tone for Sepulveda or not. I, I, and there may be s- still some division about what that's going to look like ultimately. But we attempted to redefine it in the redevelopment, or to define it in the redevelopment master plan, and I think we need to take a harder look, cause, if we kick it off strongly with something like this, it, it'll carry, you know, we'll, it will have something to point to and say, see what we did there? That's what it needs to be, and ideally, we could do that with this project, that's my thought process on that particular point.
More transparency, different materials, more articulation, I'm just looking for.
I, I think, I think ultimately, we see that as a, uh, I, I, I'm not going to be able to recite the redevelopment master plan in total, but, I mean, there is a whole section on it, and it talks about making Sepulveda, Sepulveda a living street, where there's activities, and people, you know, it's not a dark alley where nobody wants to go, they're afraid, they're afraid to get hit by a car. I, I, I don't think that, you know, and I'm not talking about whether it's CMU or Brick, or, I, that's not really my point, it's just, make it a real option for people to come in and out on Sepulveda, walk down Sepulveda. It, and again, it may not, um, uh, happen immediately, but the, I mean, this is a, a real opportunity for us to start that process. It's at the far end, it's a, it's a, I would call it a major project for our city, and it's a good opportunity to start setting that tone, so. I, I, and I'm not.
It was our intent to turn, we wanted, we wanted a force, we wanted a foresight of building, a hundred percent, we wanted a foresight of building, we don't, we don't want a back of the building.
Right.
Well, I mean, the redevelopment pla- master plan's been approved for what, a week and a half? I can't believe you guys. It, it is, I mean, it is a, I, I would say a fairly new and agreed-upon vision, particularly relative to the city, so I wouldn't expect you to be in tune with it, and you, you just, um, you happen to be the first ones at the table here, that it, that it really impacts, so.
We'll, we'll dig into it.
Uh, rubbish, do we, do we know where all the rubbish is going in?
Trash is collected inside the building, and it'll be escorted out, uh, for queuing during, uh, well, actually, the, the trash vehicles will have a, a code, they will retrieve it, they'll bring it out, they'll dump it.
So they go right into the parking?
Not the vehicles.
Oh, got it, they bring it out.
So just to provide some additional comments to what was just being discussed there, um, I recall discussion about the idea of turning Sepulveda into something like that, but maybe not that stretch. Or, you know, just the difficulty of, especially that area, most of the traffic is, is driven by the post office, because the post office is right behind there. And, uh, just difficulties with businesses using that stretch of road for deliveries and whatnot versus, you know, if, if you take that away, then where do they do, where do they go, out on Seventh? So, I don't know what specifics that our redevelopment plan would guide you to change the plan on, on that backside. I think that's more of like a, a city-driven project, if we were to look to redo Sepulveda, and what sorts of amenities or things we might change. But I guess I'm a little confused on to, to where that's going, but Brandy, if you want to?
Yeah, I think, um, one of the recommendations of the downtown, or the redevelopment master plan is to prepare a, a design plan for the Sepulveda conversion, so it would be another, um, kind of an engineering-type design document, similar to what you did with, um, the Seventh Avenue improvements. So that would guide the infrastructure itself of Sepulveda Avenue, and it does go from, um, the street that is west of Helen, I don't have the name of it here in front of me, all the way to Charles Street, so it does include this, this stretch, um, behind your property. So I'm, I'm thinking that in terms of the building design, that's more driven by the downtown design manual, and the comprehensive plan, and the, um, just the zoning districts, um, in terms of building design standards.
So how would this change then? I mean, I don't, I guess that's, I mean, what?
Well, it's still in.
You say not have the parking garage there at all?
We're still in the process of reviewing the plan against all of those, um, documents. Uh, so I don't know if I have any recommendations at this time in terms of what would change, but, um, that will be coming forward at the September first planning commission meeting.
Okay. Well, I, I think the building looks great, and, I mean, I, I hope that that little nuance doesn't change things or deter you from wanting to do anything here, but, uh, I guess I'm just, I'm not exactly sure what, how that would look different than what it already is.
Well, I'm, I'm, I have one idea I'd like to share, and Jeff and Kenny will probably kick me here. As in, you look at the top-left of that site plan, there's two parking stalls that face the west and two parking stalls that face the north. If we created a niche in the building, or a little pocket park, could we do something like that, Jeff? Where you could, you could do something in that little corner, but not changing the building a great deal, that could be an outdoor, indoor space, a community engagement space, some kind of a little pocket park, and still carry the building up above. It's kind of my reaction to a, a more of a street nod to Sepulveda than what's currently being shown. being shown.
Yeah, if I could add to that comment, I think that would be a good idea, because I think what Commissioner Wong and Commissioner Thorson are getting at is that the intent is to activate that portion of Sepulah, or all of Sepulah really, so that you've got people on foot going in and out of buildings. And right now, some buildings have access off of the Sepulah side, some of them have access off 7th Street or 7th Avenue. So it's trying to have like a dual frontage for those buildings in that block, or within that, that series of blocks.
We could create something community-based in that corner. The downside of that is I think that's where we had our murals located. But you could still do the murals inside or underneath, you know, we'd have a cantilever second floor coming over it. Just an idea, or my reaction initially to Mr. Doos.
I want to clarify, part of what I was trying to get at is not a wholesale change to, you know, the plan or what's going on. I just, you know, having been in this business for a while, I know what, you know, that door is there, you know, these, you know, those are emergency exits, right? That doesn't, there's no, and it may be more, not wholesale architectural changes, but maybe just slight operational changes that draws pedestrians out to that street as opposed to, it never gets used unless there's a fire. I mean, that-
That's exactly what my thought was.
Yeah, and that's-
If you take that parking area, you could create a corridor that would go right to the front of the house of the building, is what.
Sure, and I think people smarter than I can figure out how to do that. But that, that's really what I am kind of after, is to consider, because again, this is the first project that we're being faced with, this with the new thoughts on Sepulah. And let's not completely tie our hands here, and let's try to do something to think about, hey, let's go out the back door with bikes, and let's go out the back door with pedestrians, you know, and that's kind of the tie-in, instead of just sending everybody out onto 7th. Not that that's bad, but, you know, make, try to make it both an option. That's all.
And we actually did not do that. If you look at the plan, both, there's only two staircases in the entire building, and one goes onto Sepulah and one goes onto Helen. So all of the dog walkers that don't take the elevator will come down through the stairs and exit onto one of those two, one of those two streets. And I would assume that the staircase closest to wherever your unit is, is going to be the one that you use to take your dog out to walk. And frankly, I mean, every single one of these units will have an animal in it. At least 80% of them will, so. But my only concern about the recess at the corner of Helen and Sepulah is that it becomes an unused space and it's just a place for trash to collect and a constant maintenance thing. That was my main concern when you mentioned that. I think it could be a neat, if we recessed it in, we could put the murals on there, and that would be, that would be interesting as well. I don't think they'll be as well-lit or as engaging to the public, because they're going to be set back in a recessed area. So people will probably miss them as they walk by or drive by, because it'll be in a darkened area. Some of the other comments I had were, you have a very complicated site here, because we want to focus our attention on 7th to make 7th an active street and a successful street. And we, we don't want to have our retailers enter onto Sepulah, because we want them to enter onto 7th Street, right? That's why, that's the way the building is designed. And we only have three facades to enter the garage in, and we don't want the garage to enter from 7th. We'd prefer to not have the garage enter from Helen, so that literally leaves us Sepulah. That's why we chose where we chose, what we did. So I think we can dress up the back of it. We definitely can do that.
Well, there's another, just throwing ideas out here and kicking me again, but maybe we re-aren't the fitness to those four parking stall area.
Yeah.
And make it all a bunch of glass.
A bunch of glass, sure.
Put fun murals inside the building, so you have transparency.
Oh, that's a great idea, yeah. Then you're controlling it a little bit more.
We can activate that northwest corner more.
Matter of fact, you can make the murals fitted glass.
Yeah. So we'll try and come up with something that makes sense to...
Yeah.
If we're open to any other suggestions, too. You know, the building's clad with, I mean, we picked an architectural brick that I think several community members said to make it look like the post office. And then this industrial feel that Jeff talked about earlier, and we have metal siding that's high-quality. The windows in the building will be as big as I can possibly make them. We usually do nine, this would be nine-foot ceilings, and one of those will be at least seven.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
So just give me a flavor. I mean, we try and get a lot of transparency through these buildings for everybody's benefit. I'm looking at that north wall, and maybe we can, intentionally, I always put glass in all the parking garages that are in grade.
Yeah, you do.
Maybe we can put, articulate some more glass in that.
Yep.
Make it, make it a little bit funner on that first, on that first elevation there. So I think there's some things we can certainly take a look at to address your comments.
Fun fact about Sepulah, correct me if I'm wrong, Kenny, it was the place where the subway, or the trolley went, because they did not want to put the trolley on 7th, because they were afraid that the trolley and the horses would not mix. So they put the trolley on Sepulah.
That just changed a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
So.
That is a fun fact. We need Paul Anderson here to tell us.
If I may just add one thing to consider for the backside, you had mentioned 80% of maybe the tenants will have some sort of animal or pet. And green space downtown is very limited, so that might be something to consider as you work through the backside. Thank you.
Anything else? Robert?
I have other comments unrelated to Sepulah. I'll get that.
Yep, yep. So I want to, some of these are comments, and some of them are just food for thought to take away. We did recently receive the draft housing study, and I, for those that haven't had a chance to get to it, I-
That's on another agenda next. We're still talking about that.
Okay, but it does demonstrate capacity, so I think that's one of the things we wanted to verify, so that's good for everybody that wants to see this happen. You guys talked about the commercial space. You know, Max has just come online. We don't know whether it's going to be a success or not. If you haven't been in there, you know, I've been in there, it's great. And I think we're going to need much more of that. I understand the venting for somebody that's got a hood in there and everything else. I would, I, from an EDA perspective, I think we are going to need more of that. I would enjoy at least a conversation, talking about how we might at least be prepared for that, because I, that's not something you throw in at the 11th hour, right? And so, I'm not saying we should force it on this development, or you've got to have it, that's not my position. My position is, let's take a, let's just take a strong look and see if we can have accommodation, should we have the opportunity to get another, I'll just say Max-like facility, because, you know, food and bev down, with all these people, we want them to stay here. And if they're going to stay here, we've got to feed them. So.
I think we can.
That's, and we got to, no offense, but we've got to feed them more than Subway.
No, it's-
We got deep fry stuff.
And all the buildings that we've done that have commercial spaces, and we have built shafts through them that are sized, and that's relatively inexpensive to do.
Correct.
And just to-
You know, the ductwork can go in afterwards, as you know.
And I would, I would assume you'd want to know that now, then later, right?
Yeah.
So, because I think it was kind of an 11-hour thing, where the Sentinel, and it became a bear, right?
Right.
Yeah. So, the other thing is, the, I saw the Met Transit rendering on there, the bus station there. And I don't, I don't know where this would fall. It may fall to EDA or somewhere else within the city, but I don't think it falls to them. But I've seen some very unique Met Transit bus stations that fit really well into the environment, that aren't that thing that's shown, or just a little bench. In fact, 25 years in construction, the most expensive thing I ever built was a bus station for Met Transit. I think you were around when we did that one downtown. So, I'm not suggesting we need to do one that's similar to outside securing, but I do think that we could talk to them and get a good, you know, something that fits well in our community, that looks better than the blue plexiglass thing that people carve their initials into and look like garbage after a year. So the live-work, Councilmember Thorson, you mentioned that, and I think, I know I brought it up last time we met with the developers. I'm very leery of this, and I'm just, I don't know, I hear a lot about it, I heard a lot about it for years, I've never personally seen it in action. I don't know what, may or may not come in with it. If it does, I think it's great. I think that, you know, it makes a ton of sense. One thing I would question, again, this is not for them, but maybe more for planning and council, is, is our zoning code prepared to address live-work situations? Because it's easy if we say it's an insurance agent, and they sleep upstairs, and they sell insurance downstairs. What if it's a welder? Or even, you said pottery, or some other use that our code is not prepared to address? So, something to maybe look at. Because I don't think it does. I took a cursory look, and we could run into some hurdles there. The green space, I think, I think looks good, but the more you can get, the better. I know it's a tight corner, and we talked about pets. Councilmember Wong just asked about it. Is there a scheduled pet relief area, like up on the plazas? Is that something that you would normally put in, or?
Yeah, we have not planned that yet, but I think we could put some artificial turf in if we needed to, so.
We've done that in a couple of buildings.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it would need to be, you know, very substantial, but I, you know, I think a lot of times, if, particularly on the upstairs plazas and stuff during the winter, if there's a small pet relief area, you know, with a drain that, you guys seen them. I think that would be-
Fire hydrant, grass, yeah.
Right, a fake fire hydrant and whatever. So, I would strongly consider that, because I, I just, you know, aside from, you know, the convenience for the residents and the pets, but not having to, you know, figure out where in the park they're going to, you know, relieve themselves, or where in the city they're going to relieve themselves, if they can do it within the confines of the building footprint.
It sounds like there's a job opportunity for dog walking in the downtown.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Robert. Looks good. I think the council is definitely, you know, on board with what's going on in the comments I'm sure you'll take, you know, take with you, and I don't know what, Dr. Waldron, I don't know if you've got anything to add?
Honorable mayor, members of the council, just, again, we wanted to get this introduced to you and make sure you were comfortable with it moving forward. And secondly, that you did understand that there's a tax increment component, and some of those items will be coming before you in terms of creation of the districts and so forth. As Jim pointed out, they have submitted some of the materials, and we are looking at them right now in a preliminary fashion. There is a gap. We'll have to see whether we agree on what that gap is, or how we, we work through that. So, at this point, it was just important to make sure you're comfortable pressing forward, and that you do know that the TIF elements will also be progressing before you at some point.
Thanks, Jim, Jeff, and Ken, appreciate it, and-
Yeah, we really appreciate the opportunity to be in for here and get your feedback, and I assume what we'll do is, we'll get the comments from staff and from Planning Commission, and then resubmit a package with all the collective comments, and-
Very exciting.
Yeah, really excited to be here.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thanks much.
All right, have a good night.
Just one cautionary point, this is a redevelopment project, and redevelopment projects, projects are extremely difficult at the EDA. We were talking about how flies seem to get in the ointment when you try to move these forward, so.
Jim, one quick question, if you don't mind, is the industry right now, are you seeing it getting better with supply issues, or prices of lumber, all that?
There's some relief in lumber, but lumber is still historically high. There's supply chain issues, a lot of electrical components. I'm hearing colleagues that they're transformers and- meter sockets and things like that. So, the way we used to do these projects is totally different today. We used to get our, get out of the hole, and then we could order light fixtures, and we could get fancy appliances, and we didn't have a problem. But now, you sit down and you order everything day one, as soon as you get a contract, you know, once your documents are done to head off those supply chain issues. I'm hearing from, well, I guess my favorite builder now, that he thinks the labor markets are, you know, first quarter of next year, things are going to slow down a bit because of everything that's happening, and pricing should improve. So that was, and that was a conversation that was six or eight weeks ago. So this project seemed like it would be a really good fit, just to keep going.
So the timing might be good.
Yeah. And I heard that, well, actually, from a few different builders. Things are slowing down, and which, in the headlines, everyone says we're in a recession, and we're not in a recession. Well, I think we're in a recession. But regardless, so, we're just, we're doing things a lot different these days than we used to, to head off all those issues.
Good, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, anyhow, I was just saying, be ready, there are always challenges with redevelopment projects, challenges here that we don't even know what they're going to be yet, and they'll, they'll crop up. There are always more difficult projects, but we'll, we'll deal with them and work through them as they come up. The other thing, honorable mayor, we just had the Maxfield report submitted, and we just wanted to get that to you as basic background, so you had that. As Robert pointed out, there, it did point out that the market certainly exists, there's still room to make projects like this happen in the downtown. And at some point, we'll have the Maxfield people in for a presentation. Robert, I think we were talking about that at the EDA, weren't we? So maybe we could combine those meetings or something, and-
So we're not going to present it tonight?
You don't have to, no, that's just given to you as deep background and how you could, I mean, there's certainly some good information there, and how you could see the market potential for this project as depicted in the study. But we'll, we'll get into it in more detail at some future point, if you'd like to do that.
I think the cover letter explains a lot of it. So. Hey, that's it?
Onward.
Onward. Thank you, thank you. Yep, have a good night. City manager, anything else?
That was all that's on the topics for the agenda this evening for the workshop. So that is it.
I really liked the design. I don't know if anybody else wants to make another comment or anything, but I thought the design was really good. Like I said, really, it's really going to be a change for downtown at that, and also to be able to get the corner building. I think it was very important as part of the project, so. Very good. No other business, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong, second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, the workshop is adjourned, and we'll convey in about 25 minutes.